First thing on the agenda tonight, well actually prior to our regular meeting agenda is a public hearing. We're here tonight to hear Eastlake Partners again present their presentation. You've been here several times before, which we really appreciate. Tonight, we're going to kind of go through an overview again. And the intent for everybody that's sitting out there, what we're doing tonight is listening to the installation and maintenance. I know last time you were here, we talked about the site plan. They're still up. We put them back up for you if you want to refer to them and anything else you want us to get. We have some more things of yours in the office. But tonight's public hearing is about the installation and maintenance of the solar development on town-owned property on Route 55. So with that, I'd like to introduce our presenters Wendy DeWolf and Jamie Fordice. You guys can elaborate on your backgrounds and who you are for some people that may not have been here before.
Great. I see some familiar faces, so Wendy DeWolf.
Jamie Fordice.
And we're developing this solar facility on town-owned land on Route 55. It is a 2-megawatt solar facility. It will be a fixed tilt south-facing system across both sides of the road, focusing today on installation and maintenance. The installation process is fairly short. It's about three to six months, mostly the longest lead time waiting on the utility to physically connect the system to the grid. The actual construction time is very straightforward. We're really just driving piles into the ground on this landfill or not. We're going to move ballast. We don't want to affect the integrity of the cap. And it's fairly straightforward, minimal disturbance type of construction. And then, once it's operational, it operates for 25 years. It has regular maintenance related to mowing, which comes a couple of times a year, just really to keep the, enough to keep the grass lower than the panels itself, so it doesn't cause shading. And obviously, road maintenance and other kind of site maintenance itself, but that really happens, you know, two to four times a year. In addition to that, any electrical maintenance that happens, you know, small tune-ups over the year also happens about two times a year. So it's a fairly, there won't be a lot of traffic to the site. It will just kind of operate on its own and be monitored remotely. So with that, we'll open it up to any questions that you guys have related to either the project and design, which we discussed last time, or the installation and construction and operation of the project.
Those are ambulance calls, sorry. Apologize for that. We lost one ambulance driver, actually. That's why he left.
And just for the broader context, we've expressed this in prior meetings, this will be operated as a community solar facility, so the actual electricity that's provided will be going out to the grid into Central Hudson's general power pool. But by paper, residents and ratepayers of Central Hudson, if you get your utility bill from Central Hudson, you can subscribe to the project to basically a percentage share of any monthly generation will be allocated to your, allocated to your bill as a credit.
Which means it's about a 10 or 11 percent discount?
It's a 10 percent discount on your, on your existing energy bill.
Which I think some people may have heard this before, but which is really interesting, the interesting part to me is some people in Unionvale don't want to put solar panels on their roofs because of it being historical or whatever it is. And this gets them the exact same benefit without having to install their own solar panels. You may want to explain, I mean, some people just don't realize that's how it works, which is...
Right. So the purpose of community solar was to create a framework for those who can't or prefer not to put solar panels on their roof to get the benefits of solar energy. Additionally, by doing the larger system versus smaller systems on disparate houses allows for greater cost savings on behalf of the customer.
And the town is doing, we're very excited about this project because we had Bakeridge on Route 55 that we weren't using and hadn't been using for years. And we found for us, this is a way for us to get a lease payment because they're leasing the land from us. So we'll get annual revenue and then all of our homeowners are at least 400 or 500 of them. Do you think you might have that many subscriptions?
If we have that much participation, yes, but across the, across the project, we should have upwards of 400.
That'd be great. Then families can sign up for this community solar, so it's a dual benefit, so.
Right. And the town will be able to buy its power from, so that we'll be getting the double savings of...
Well, you'll be getting the...
You'll be getting the lease money.
The discount, you'll be getting savings plus a lease payment.
Right.
Not only that, and we've talked about this last time, but other local benefits during the construction of the project. Well, it's a short season, we try to at least hire within, you know, electricians, laborers within the region. Great. So I see some hands, so we should open it up.
Please excuse, I think you guys said I know nothing about those solar panels here. But we, in October, sometimes November, and then early spring, we have a lot of ice. Sometimes ice makes snow, say, have an impact on the panel?
Could you repeat the question because they won't pick it up on TV if you don't?
The question was about ice coming in late fall and winter.
And when it's all early spring, we often will get ice with snow or just ice?
Sure.
So, is there an impact on these panels?
Well, when snow accumulates on the panels, it's, you know, not generating as much electricity as you otherwise would. Typically, there's a little bit of heat that's, that's generated, so it's harder for snow and ice to accumulate, but it does happen in, you know, intense cold weather. The panels are rated for, you know, impact from hail and rated to withstand, you know, typical conditions, much more extreme conditions than we have here. They're, they're deployed in Alaska and beyond.
So I shouldn't worry?
You shouldn't worry.
Don't worry about that.
Okay, so, all right, I didn't say depth of snow. You said they only generate a certain amount of heat, but what if we get a lot of snow?
So is your concern related to if you were a subscriber, or is your concern related to our, how the, how the system is functioning towards the benefits of the town, was the root of, as a subscriber?
Yes.
So typically, the way we do it, right, solar is going to have a seasonal production. So during the summer, it's, you know, there's, there's more hours of sunlight, it's going to have a higher production than it has during the winter, whether that's because there's fewer hours of sunlight, but also we might have a big snowstorm and, you know, the panels get covered and we, and we lose a couple of days, right? So that's all factored into how we predict the production. And so when you sign up to us with a subscription, we're going to say, well, annually, you use this amount of, you pay this much to Central Hudson, right? And so we're going to say, we're going to, we're going to design your subscription so that it meets that dollar amount over the year. Now, sometimes, you know, because it's all kind of credits roll over from month to month, so it may happen that during the summer, your share of the solar farm exceeds slightly your usage. So you won't, you'll have, you'll have some extra credits on your bill that will roll over to the next month, and then you'll be able to use them in the winter months to, so when you actually don't have as much solar energy production. So we kind of account for that by the annualized solar production.
Question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how is that different to like having a subscription to the Green Mountain Energy, so how is it different?
Yeah, so the difference is, with community solar, you're subscribing specifically to a project that, that you can know and see and understand, whereas oftentimes, you know, if you're just subscribing through the utility or retail energy provider, the renewable energy that you're purchasing is, basically, they're buying a credit, could be from out-of-state renewable resource or, or way out in western, you know, western part of the state. So community solar is a way to invest more locally into projects and renewable energy in the backyard.
And how do we see like the difference, you know, between the two of you? Is there a place to...
It's actually a different product, and you actually could technically do both. They're not mutually exclusive. So when you're buying something from Green Mountain Energy, you're basically buying, you're buying a pure renewable energy credit. So it's something...
Buy what?
A renewable energy credit, right? So it's something that's like a, a product that's associated with renewable energy production, but it's, you actually can't, you know, might be, you can't generate them within New York State that can be sold on its own. So usually, these are renewable credits that are generated in other states that can be sold, you know, to you, that you're supporting, you know, the revenue to some, you know, renewable energy facility within the United States, but not specifically local to you. When you're subscribing, so you can kind of use that product. It's a separate, you know, it's paid outside of your electric bill. This community solar subscription, like Jamie was saying, is tied to a specific local project, and it appears on your electric bill. So your Central Hudson electric bill will now have a line that says credits from this community solar facility, and it will be a negative number off of the total dollar value on your bill. So it's something that's directly correlated there with your electricity delivery as opposed to kind of a separate product at the outside of that.
And is there, can I look it up on your website?
So we typically don't initiate subscriptions until we are fully permitted and have our approvals and we know the project is moving forward. You can go on our website, which is eastlakepartners.com, and send us, there is a specific ELP, Unionvale Solar page on that website, which you can click through and, and send us an email so that we will keep you on our list once we are fully permitted and reach out.
And get more information.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there going to be a way that people will be able to find out how much solar we're actually producing there in energy?
So once we have it operational, we can, we can, we'll be collecting that data, and there's ways for that, you know, to share. Often, the platforms that we use to work with residential subscribers have, you know, basically a dashboard where you can see what your system is producing and what's here that you're...
Good. Are there any other questions?
There's no cost as a subscriber?
There is no upfront cost. The, I would say, the only downside, if you see it, is that you have to pay two bills because you get the credit on your Central Hudson bill that's going to get your, Central Hudson bill hopefully to size it right to about zero or kind of within, you know, under $20, right? Kind of getting it as close as you can to zero, depending on how much, we'll work with you to size your portion, if you want 80% of your bill or 100% of your bill. So we'll apply that there, but you need to pay us 90% of the value of those credits on a separate bill. So we will either invoice you separately or send you and set up an ACH type of system so that you don't really have to think about it, but that's the only kind of, I would say, drawback to this situation, but there's no upfront cost. If you were installing solar in your own house, there would be an upfront cost that you would have to put out for solar.
So who do we pay? Two people, Central Hudson and Unionvale?
Correct. And the state's, state's trying to work on consolidated billing, but at this point, there's just a lot of red tape that they're trying to work through.
So, and hopefully, at some point during the operation of the solar facility, instead of paying the project and Central Hudson, you just pay Central Hudson and Central Hudson would pay the project.
So does the customer have a wattage that they can exceed?
So it's all actually based on dollar value. So it's not, it's not based on energy usage, it's based on the value, the total value of that energy usage. So we produce, when we produce energy into the grid, that's valued at a certain dollar amount. Call it, you know, if it's, you know, your portion is valued, let's say, at $100 a month that we did, that gets credited to your bill, and then you see it as $100. You signed up to receive essentially $100 a month. And hopefully, your, likely, your bill is $120, you know, $20 a month, you're never exceeding that.
Here's another question. What happens when Central Hudson raises their rates for their service, or how do you accommodate?
So it's not correlated?
So you should raise your subscription level with us is what you would want to do. So basically, the costs that you pay at your home in terms of your rate, call it 10 cents a kilowatt hour, and that's lower than you pay, but the cost at which we're compensated as a solar farm is less than that. So we might be, we might be getting eight cents per kilowatt hour as we pump electrons onto the grid. So the, so it's a, it's a dollar credit. So if, as Wendy was saying, if, if in a month, you're, you know, we generate $100 worth of solar generation to the utility, and you have 10% of that generation, you're going to see a $10 credit on your bill. For that credit, you're going to pay us $9, basically. And so you realize that dollar of savings, that 10% savings. That's essentially how it works. If your cost goes up from the utility, then your overall bill's going to go up, and, but your, nothing changes in terms of realizing that 10% savings from the credits we're allocating to your bill. You just might want to have more credits allocated to your bill so you can save more.
Does that make sense? The PSC did not make it simple for us. I would just, I would just throw that out there, but the whole point is that it's not correlated, it's no longer, in the old days, it's correlated to your actual electricity usage, so we think about it in units of kilowatt hours. Now we think about it in dollar units.
So you have to subscribe for so much, so much money a month?
It's a percentage allocation of the total output of the facility, right?
Which would be, which would correlate, yes. It's total dollars per, per year is how we think of it, which, which gets to the issue, which gets to, which addresses the issue that you wouldn't be receiving enough in the winter.
How much energy use?
It's, so it's, we typically base it on historical usage, and, you know, we look at, we take a look at all your electric bills over the last year, what you've been paying, and it usually is pretty consistent. And we size it, we undersize it, so you're never over, you know, we're never trying to sell you more credits than you're actually going to use.
And just for a technical point, we put it in a solid form, we have, we have people buying a subscription, some people don't buy into the subscription. How is the energy distributed? Is it still common wires or lines? I guess I have a problem with technical...
Would you mind repeating that?
Yeah, so the question is, and it's a very good question, is the idea of, you know, if, if some people subscribe and some other people don't subscribe, how is the solar energy actually distributed? And really, it's, it operates by, you know, simple laws of physics in that we're going to put the electrons into the grid and they're going to flow to areas of, you know, lower resistance, so where, where the load is high. So it's actually not, it's not like we can send it, you are not receiving power directly, you're receiving credit. So the, the electrons go into the grid, Central Hudson uses a meter to measure how much, many electrons we put in the grid. They, on your bill, kind of by paper, ascribe those, that energy in the form of dollars to, or the value that's put onto the grid to those users. So if you don't subscribe, you may get the solar energy, you're not getting the savings.
Okay, so it's kind of like a cost averaging, basically, or a usage averaging?
I'm not sure, I, I see the...
Larry, hey Larry, would you do me a favor? Would you come up and just speak? They're not going to be able to hear you at home.
You have the solar route, you have the solar route.
Larry, into the microphone, I'm sorry. They won't hear you unless you come up. We're going to get some texts in a few minutes. We can't hear him from home.
He's on tech.
Okay, we can talk afterwards.
Sorry about that.
Any other questions this evening?
Did you get your text just? Does anybody else have any questions? If you do, please come up to the microphone so we don't exclude the home, people at home.
At least you need here.
That's what YouTube is for, they figure, right? Okay, well, just by brief explanation, so next month, we will be passing our, the resolutions that we need to pass, the Monroe and Forseifer, and we'll be doing that after we hear comments back from the interested agencies. You might be hearing maybe in November from Central Hudson as to whether or not the infrastructure can carry this load to the substation?
Right.
And then what would happen after that? If the news is good, then we are going to proceed with everything, and I'm assuming we will, I'm going to be very optimistic because we're very excited about the project. But if the news is good and we proceed forward, what happens in December?
In December, if we have our permit from, from you and our permit from PSC, and we have our interconnection from the grid, and we've also finalized any pilot agreements that need to come together, then we will bring the, we will start the financing of this project and the construction, the negotiation of the construction process, sort of, that it after the construction, you know, so we're going to build it. And then hopefully, when we're under, enter, we'd be in a position to build it in the late spring or summer, depending on the weather.
Great. So can you move right along then? All right. Well, with no further questions, let's close this hearing, and we thank you very much for coming, and we look forward to, you don't have to be here in October, but I'm sure we'll be talking to you, and we'll get progress reports. We'll talk, if you want to come back, you're more than welcome.
We're available.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you everyone.
Appreciate it. Okay, this hearing is closed. At this point, I would like to call our regular agenda meeting to order and ask everybody to please join me in splitting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, did everybody read the minutes from the August 15th meeting? Okay, can I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion, approve it as written.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the path that we've approved the minutes for August 15th. Now, I would like to take a moment to make some special introductions. And our town board, if you got, wouldn't mind coming up and standing here too, because we're going to be shaking hands with some special people. Is there a sermon from my mom? How are you? How was the travel?
It was terrible. I was upset for being all this late, so.
We might need the microphone. We could have to...
Thank you. I'm actually between three different pairs now, I can't see what, any of them.
So you want to give a story?
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Alan Sermon, your county legislator, serving about two-thirds of Unionvale and all of Dover. And I want to thank Supervisor Moss for sending me all the details about the neighbors who really were just outstanding and helped down in the local tragedy that you folks had, that plane crash into a building, what was it, last month?
August 17th.
August 17th, so it's been almost a month now. So basically, with the details, I thought it'd be an outstanding idea to put together a commendation. We don't do this too often at the county level, but this really was an occasion, and it's something very, very special. So basically, I'll read this. Commendation: Unionvale Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Legislative sermon offers to follow and move its adoption. Whereas the people of the county of Dutchess greatly appreciate the courageous and selfless acts of our residents to help others, and whereas on August 17th, 2019, a plane crashed into the home of Gerald, Jerry, and Barry Barker located on South Smith Road in the town of Unionvale, where they live with their daughters Sarah and Hannah, while their brother, Will, lives in California. And whereas, prior to the arrival of first responders, neighbors came to the rescue to help save lives. And whereas, Rick Plambeck, Jose Santiago, and other persons from Meadow Ridge Lane ran over to help Sarah get out of a second-floor window, talking her onto a ladder while the smoke was filling up in the room behind her, and helping move Hannah, who was ejected out of the house through a front window, further away because the flames, explosions, and popping wires were coming too close to where she was laying on the ground, having landed in a kiddie pool. And whereas Barry Barker returned home from work and was found by Larry Matiello wandering around disoriented, and Sarah Israel was comforting Hannah, badly burned, while Bill and Judy Keating, longtime neighbors, were in the front helping Sarah and Barry and others move away from the flames and danger. And whereas Donna Holdenkamp and her daughter were rushing to get hoses to put together to start to put out the flames, and Kathleen Brennan, a retired nurse, took over helping Hannah until the EMTs arrived. And whereas Corey Petrus is working diligently with other groups to find Charlie, the Barker's second puppy, and Carrie Cochran, a family friend, has started a fundraiser on Facebook. And whereas, we mourn the death of Gerald Jerry Barker and realize that Barry, Sarah, and Hannah have no clothes, no possessions, and no home, but to have many caring neighbors, do have many caring neighbors and who are devastated and care deeply about the well-being of their friends and neighbors. And whereas the dedicated Unionvale Fire Department and Rescue Squad, state police, and other first responders and county officials also assisted during this tragedy. responders and county officials also assisted during this tragedy. And whereas because of the quick action, courageous dedication, and heroism of the Barker's neighbors and community, lives were likely saved. Now for it be resolved that the Dutchess County Legislature, on behalf of all the people of Dutchess County, does hereby commend and extend its most heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to the Barker's neighbors and for their bravery, heroism, commitment, and service to the Barker family in their time of need. So it was simply, you can tell there's a lot going on here. And it was just an amazing, outstanding effort. And it speaks very, very well for the people of Unionvale and Dutchess County. So I'm quite pleased to hand this award out.
And we have, if Rick, well, you can hand it out.
That's okay.
Sarah Israel, would you come on up? And Rick Plambeck, come on up. Most of the other group got their, we're at the Dutchess County Legislature. Sarah, would you come down and let us all give you a big hug?
Yes.
Rick. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thanks for everything you did.
I just want to say that this goes to everybody, not stop. Not just the few people that are being recognized, but everybody, all the neighbors. And like you said before, it's neighbors helping neighbors in Unionvale. And that's what it's all about. But thank you.
You did a great job. Well, you had a long drive here. You don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting, but you're more than welcome. Thank you, Alan. So at this portion of the meeting, for those of you, there are agendas in the door. You guys have them and are following. We have to move into an executive session to talk about the acquisition, sale, or lease of real properties. So I'd like a motion that we go into executive session.
Before we go into the executive session, I'd like to mention too that I think the whole town board will agree with me that we want to commend our Unionvale Fire Department and their mutual aid companies that were there as quickly as they could be and did a fantastic job. Many of those firemen who were volunteers spent the night there and much of the next day, you know, doing salvage on the house, getting out all the stuff that the family could use, saving as much of their memories as possible. They were also there to get the pilot and Mr. Barker out of the house. And they did all that salvage work. And all these people are volunteers. It's nice to see everybody come together. It would like, it would be awfully nice to see many more of you or some of you join the fire company or the rescue squad. We have a job for everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. We all agree. All right, was there a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go into, you have a few minutes. We'll be back and we'll take a moment.
Question taken. The call being about to order from there. May we have your attention, please, or may we have quiet so that we can all talk? Second, no one favor? Okay, thank you. We are now resumed, we have resumed. Next up is the Town Supervisor's report and I am, we've got the cash flow that has been distributed. We've done, I think, a really good job on expenses. We're at eighty-seven percent with below our budgeted expenses, which is good. We're a little short on our cash coming in. We had a shorter summer than we expected, but we have some things coming up between now, we have ninety-five percent of our goal versus our budget. But we have some good things coming up and I think that we're going to end up okay at the end of the year. So, there's nothing really unique that happened this month. The only other thing that's tough about August is that we have three payrolls. So, it's very expensive as far as cash going out, that's the way it is every, every August. So, it's like, oh, but anyway, it's, it's looking fine for the rest of the year. I also wanted to mention that we are in the middle of our commercial liability insurance application, which is a big deal. We have both our Highway Super and our Park Manager are checking all the vehicles that we have insured, that they sent us a schedule of, and we're looking at all of the assets that each of these departments owns. We're trying to get everything, make sure we've got it shored up and done properly. We're working with our outside auditor Ted Eglett, who's got some good schedules. So, all of that's going to be in order and that will happen probably at the end of October that they'll roll over. No, I'll get those new rates pretty soon, which are definitely going up. But I don't, Nimer's a great company and I don't think they'll go up that much. The tentative 2020 budget is going to be finished, the deadline is required is nine-thirty, September thirtieth, so all the copies will be at the front desk. Everything else is pretty much business as usual, we have an awful lot going on here. I did want to make a couple of comments. I have, one thing that we don't get a chance to do very often is compliment people. And I wanted to share two things that came to my attention recently. And then, I think next month, I've saved some, so I wouldn't be here for half an hour talking about compliments, but I'm going to give some more next month. But I had an email from a nice lady, Susan Murphy, over on Meadow Ridge Lane, and she said, "I just had the pleasure of meeting the Constable Jim, Jimmy Miller, who was patrolling my road this evening because they've been complaining about things going on over there. I was extremely happy to see him as we've been having a few extremely unnerving weeks here on our nice, quiet, friendly neighborhood road." I asked Jim why he was patrolling our road tonight and he said that he drove through the neighborhood and last evening and saw some of my neighbors who told him about the recent events going on here, they're burning some things in one of the corners under a tree. It is relieving to many of us on our road to know he is driving through. And she wrote a long, lovely email, I won't read the whole thing, but at the end, she said, "As Constable Jim and I were talking tonight, if we happen to see someone, we will immediately call 911, but we really thank Jim for caring about the safety of our neighborhood." And I noticed that with employees, you, you hear the bad stuff, you don't always share the compliments, so we, we need to give kudos to Jimmy Miller for making these families feel a little more comfortable over there. I also wanted to say, and, and I told George about George Cold about this today, and he said, "Oh, my God, that hundred dollars really paid off." Because I got five compliments about George Cold this month. And one of the nicest compliments that he got was a gentleman who called me, and I just want to share this with the board, because gentleman called me, you know that barbecue eighty-two, or is it eighty-two barbecue? That cute restaurant that's opened up, our newest-
On Tompkins Road and eighty-two.
Yeah, on Tompkins Road and eighty-two. Well, the owner of that called me and he said he couldn't believe how wonderful the process was here. And he said he talks to his friends that are doing something in other towns and they, they string them along and string them along, and he goes, "George came in every time and said, 'Now, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta do this.'" He said, "I made it happen and they're open." They're having actually a big grand opening this weekend. So, because, and I won't go through all the other compliments, but I've gotten emails and phone calls, five in one month for George. So, I don't know if it was that hundred dollars. He did get an awful lot of compliments and I just want to say, we have some terrific people here and they, they're all working really hard and they're all doing what's best for the residents and we hope the residents know that as well. So, kudos to George. Now, next up, we have Board Member Reports, because that's about all I was going to go over, too many business. And I thought we'd start with Councilman Frazier.
Right. Recently, State Legislature passed a bill here that permits early voting here for all elections. And in Duchess County, there are five locations, it'll be starting Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from twelve to five. Then, on the weekdays from that point forward, well, actually, it's not all weekdays, every day has a different time period for some reason, which would seem to be confusing. But anyways, as early as October twenty-sixth through then, the Tuesdays of the Election Day, which I believe is November fifth then this year. And there's five sites throughout Duchess County, and one of them happens to be here, it's going to be Unionvale Town Hall, the other four, Rhinebeck Town Hall, Millbrook Firehouse, Duchess County Board of Elections, which is in Poughkeepsie, and then the Fishkill Town Hall.
That's great, thank you. So, we have some of these, now, these are up, I think somewhere on the door of Unionville Town Hall. They're on the door, great, so people can see them and know. It is a little confusing, twelve to five, twelve to, nine to five, twelve to eight, so you definitely have to check. Okay, Councilwoman Kelly?
So, I had been communicating with, with Betsy throughout the week. We had a meeting here, which many of you may know about, last Thursday, in relation to community concerns with Skydive Air Force. But concerns were also literally about what happened there. And while Jerry did die, Hannah is still alive and undergoing treatment, and so many people-
And her sister are reading these to her, they are making boards for her in the hospital. She will be there for a very long time. They also need encouragement. Some of the ways to keep up with them, I did mention these last week, but I figured I wanted to put it all in a compiled space, so I can also make copies, I have handouts, but to get, to get updates, there are two Facebook pages for Hannah. So, if you are on Facebook, you can follow Hannah's Fight and Hannah's Hurricanes. They often post the same thing, but sometimes businesses and different things have been doing fundraisers, where you can go, you can have some food, participate in a fundraiser. The online fundraiser, which many of you are probably already aware, since as John pointed out, it has been thirty-two days, the Barker Family Tragedy Fundraiser. But there are many more direct ways to give, so even at Town Hall, Andrea's been collecting gift cards, gift cards for groceries, gift cards for many different things. You can also go to Amazon, they actually have a family need page. They are generous enough that in their own tragedy, they are also asking for donations to the Ronald McDonald House. So, yesterday, a friend brought down two huge boxes of like bounty paper towels and they posted it on their page. So, even in their own, you will notice some things through the Amazon gift list that isn't even directly to the family, but some of it is literally just to keep their sanity. Some craft supplies, some different things to keep their minds off of what they are going through in the moment. You can give directly to Ronald McDonald House, it is a fabulous organization, I have the address to give directly to the one they're staying in Westchester. My family has been impacted profoundly by the Children's Hospital down there, Maria Ferrari. Four years ago this October, my daughter was admitted there for sixteen days with a life-threatening blood clot. Alfreda knows this all too well. And the silliest little thing I learned can help. They have these little houses, these little cardboard houses, and I'm like, what is this? I'm, I'm sitting in the middle of a pediatric ICU and they're like, "Oh, you just put like your little soda tabs in there and you bring them over to the Ronald McDonald House." Well, when I got out, as grateful as I was, my daughter got to turn sixteen the next year, so for her sixteenth big shindig, we actually had all her friends bring things we could donate back. But in those four years, I've been collecting those little aluminum tabs off of soda cans, beer cans, whatever you can find them on. People at work do it, I forgot them at home, but I currently am up to two gallon jugs full to go down there. So, if you can simply keep a little plastic Ziploc bag in your kitchen and dump a few in there, you can bring them in here, we will make sure they make it down there. We can even donate them in Hannah's name. What happens is, is obviously the aluminum gets weighed and donated and the proceeds go to help Ronald McDonald House. There was a blood drive this week, we are going to hold a blood drive in Unionvale on Saturday, October twelfth, ten AM to four PM? Ten to four, right? And it'll be down at the park, at the senior room, right? The senior center room. So, we'll have, we do, we will have some flyers for that, we will be posting it on the Town Page, so everybody has information, I'm sure there is a contact. But one of the things that a burned victim so desperately, desperately needed due to losing a lot of fluids, obviously, when you were that badly burned, are platelets and things like that. So, this whole entire, I mean, they're accepting blood donations of any kind, so they'll take your red blood cells, but it will defray the cost to the family, which is excessive in obviously cases like this and for such a prolonged hospitalization. So, we are hosting our own. Also, we'll be getting information out to you. Betsy was speaking to a resident last night who is a certified Pilates instructor, and she will be offering two times a week, one-hour class for the whole month of October, Pilates classes for fifty dollars total, and all of the proceeds will go to the Barker family. So, even if you, you know, pay the fifty dollars and come three or four times, because that's all you can make, know that all of that money is going exactly, right directly to the Barker family. So, if anyone's interested, I can make copies, send you home with your to-do list and anything you can do to help.
And we'll, we'll send that out on Unionvale Mail, too, because I think there's a flyer being prepared. And I think she wants to have an informational session on October first, so it's coming, we'll get that out to everybody.
And then, many of you may already know, it was in the Poughkeepsie Journal, there is a memorial service for Jerry this Saturday at ten AM at the Catholic Church on Route eighty-two. They were asking for RSVPs because they're expecting it to be very packed. I don't directly have that information on who to respond to, but if you need that, grief is a powerful thing, if you need that to be there, I'm sure the family would appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Walsh?
Okay. I'd just like to talk about a new campaign the town is initiating. We've gotten a lot of complaints from residents over the last two, three, four months about people speeding around town. Now, unfortunately, the consequence can be unsafe situations, accidents, and other unpleasant things. So, in cooperation with the state police, we're initiating a less speed, less harm campaign for the month of October. And really, the purpose is to remind people, slow down, follow the speed limit, the speed limits are there for your own safety. Some of the roads, you know, aren't as able to handle a lot of speed, so the speed is posted accordingly, and we think it's going to help everybody and every animal that often goes in the road, we like to see animals live as well. So, the patrols will be increased on key town roads, and I'm going to, I'm going to mention them right now. Camby Road, Chestnut Ridge Road, down through Clove Road and even onto Clove Valley Road, Wingdale Mountain Road, Gruskin Road, and South Harlem Road. These are the roads, we've had complaints from residents, and we'd really like to suggest that everybody step back, keep an eye on your speed, no matter what road you're on, in Unionvale or anywhere, but especially in Unionvale, please try to keep to the posted speed limit. And beware that the state police are going to try to ensure that people do that, so patrols will be increased.
And the good thing, I'm just going to add, a resident, an important lovely resident, he left the room. He met with me yesterday and added, was telling me that Oswego Road, right there, that intersection being North and South Smith and Oswego, that there, it's, and I've heard from two other people since he was here yesterday, that that's a terrible intersection, you know, they can kind of blow through those stop signs? And they're speeding, and two other people had called and said, "Oh, it's really, really gotten bad." I think, you know, there was a lot of commotion there during the month of August and I think people are heightened. And so, we can add that road to the list, because the state troopers are going to have this heightened enforcement on the roads that we give. So, we'll add that, too, to try to get everybody to slow down, we just don't need another Mary Jean Calvi, right? Anything else?
Uh, that's it for now.
Okay. Councilwoman McMorris? Nice to meet you, sir.
This last week, I was working basically with veterans. We've had a few requests about putting up the hometown hero banners, and I've looked into those, I've got some samples here. I've already had two people say that they would definitely want them up. I'll email prices to the Town Board, you know, so that we can probably, you know, with Veterans' Day coming up next month? Well, next month, they have two months. Two months, right. I think it's a good idea to get started on. I was also at the Veterans Liaison Meeting Tuesday night at the County Legislature, and they brought out all the things that are available to veterans, and there are a lot of things that we can do for the veterans right now. And any veterans, I mean, the problem that they're having is a lot of veterans don't want to go into a big group-type situation. So, they have liaisons in all towns, right now, I'm liaison in the town of Unionvale. Any veterans that have any concerns, they can contact, well, my email and phone number's on the webpage, where they can contact Andrea and Andrea will get in touch with me. One of the things that I did want to bring out, because this is not only, this was brought up there, it's not only for the veterans, but a lot of the senior citizens in the town is rebuilding together, but the applications have to be in by the end of the month. We'd be able to get you smoke detectors, carbon CO2 alarms, fire extinguishers, motion lighting for outside, plus major repairs in your home if you need them. It is a financially-based project, but most retired people fall into this category and they can get these things done by the county. But the applications have to be in by September thirtieth. Anybody who's interested, again, either get ahold of Andrea or me directly.
There's a link for the application on the top.
And there's a link for, yeah, but I'd be more than happy to help you with it so that we can get it done. And I have the financial requirements they gave me Tuesday night, so.
So, the meeting was good?
The meeting was good. Please, veterans, contact me. There is a lot available to you out there.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we would have a report from our Town Highway Superintendent, but he's not here. I did speak with him earlier, I do think that Mallory Road has been finished.
Yes.
And it looks, the part that I saw looked pretty good.
It's very good.
Yeah, so that, that-
Much improved.
Good. And I don't, does anybody have any other, I know I will call him or email him when people call looking for mowing on the side of the road, like I got two new locations today if people need it. I forwarded it and he said he would take care of it. So, they're taking care of things when they know, but I don't know, beyond that, I don't know, does anybody else have anything else they can add? I just knew about Mallory. No? All right, well, he was going to send in a written report, if we get that, we'll post that along with the rest of the, the meeting materials. Town clerk report?
Conservation license are on sale as of August first, so if you need either hunting or fishing, please stop by and I'll help you to outfit you with that.
Great. And I did want to say, I forgot Andrea and I apologize, you had a wonderful compliment yesterday, she was the third person on my list. You went by somebody's house yesterday, brought them a permit to their home and sat there and talked to them for a while, and I have to say, I think you made their year. So, thank you. A home delivery from the Town Clerk, that was really lovely. Okay, we have now public comments on agenda items? Anything on the agenda that anybody wants to talk about? No? Okay, our board, our committee, we have tonight, Aki Bush, who will come on up and sit with us, Aki, and give the board a report on the Conservation Advisory Council. There's two seats right there, take your pick. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Forgot my reading glasses two days, did I turn on my glasses?
No, I can, I'll, I'll be okay. So, I just want to bring everyone up to speed on what the Conservation Advisory Council has been up to, and I will try to keep this brief, but there are a few things we've been doing. First one is, one of our concerns has been encouraging greater use of the recycling center. So, Pat on the CAC is working on putting together a survey to collect, to collect community input for adding, for adding programs at the recycling center, and thus far, we're thinking about book exchange, furniture, furniture exchange, toy exchange, possibly composting. So, he's putting together the survey, there's some talk of putting this on survey, what's it called? Thank you, yes, on that. I'm not sure we'll go ahead and do that, we may not need to, but anyway, the idea is to get community input before we put any programs into place. Second thing we're, we're developing is a program called Food for Thought, which is getting more people to, a program to get more people to come use Tymore Park. And so, there'll be food trucks and lectures, and the first one is on October thirteenth, it's the moon, I think you probably, a lot of you maybe know about this, but it's the full moon, Moon Brew Fest, there'll be a, a walk in the full moon, there'll be food trucks, there'll be one truck, and then a local brewer also. And then, the person giving the lecture is Andrew Richards, who is over at Shady Knoll Distillery on whatever.
Rushell Road.
Rushell Road, thank you. And he's going to give us a short, maybe 20, 30-minute presentation on cultivation of fruit trees, which I think people, a lot of people are interested in, so that's going to be his talk. I haven't, we haven't quite figured out the time. I think he's going to maybe talk at 7:00 and the walk, anyway, but we're.
I think it's going to be a little earlier.
A little earlier.
I think the hike will start at 7:00 as much.
The hike is at 7:00, so we'll start that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Be able to eat and have a cocktail if they want before or after that hike.
Before, okay.
So they'll get a good lecture, a beautiful full moon hike.
We hope you will all come, we hope you'll all come, bring your friends. The idea is to really get this, this thing going. Okay, also, on the Clove Valley weevil release, I'm sure most of you, many of you have noticed that on Clove Valley, there's really, the Mylamint Vine has been proliferating there for the last few years. So on July 18th, Kiara Proana from the Lower Hudson Division of Prism, which stands for Partnership for Invasive Species Management, released 1,000 weevils on two sites on either side of Clove, Clove, Clove Valley Road?
Yes, Clove.
Clove Valley Road, sorry. On property owned by the Clove Valley Rod and Gun Club. And there will be, as I understand it, additional releases. I think they're planning on doing 4,000 weevils overall over an extended period of time. It's a USDA-approved biological control. It's, 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 it seems thus far, it's been effective in other areas. It provides long-term control. It can be dispersed in areas that are hard to handle with, you know, hand-pulling, and also in areas that are difficult to access. May take five to 10 years, it could take that long for the weevils to really have a kind of significant effect, but it does seem to be the, the most effective strategy for getting rid of Mylamint Vine. We are also working with Barbara Butler from the Local Waterman Bird Club, came and sat in on our meeting last month, and gave us, we were talking about putting birdhouses, a program to build birdhouses with kids for Timor Park, and she came and advised us that bluebird boxes would be the way to go. So one of our members, Kevin, is, is working with a tech teacher at Arlington High School to put, for a program so the kids can build some bird boxes, and then the idea is, is once we get going, maybe the kids in the after-school program here can help install them, can help clean them. Anyway, the idea is to build these boxes with the kids and have it be kind of a program that involves local kids. So we've been working on that. What else? We're also, the CAC is also interested in climate, climate-smart communities, and we would like to work with Unionvale Task Force Community, Community?
Coordinator?
Community Coordinator. I'm finally this. Who's designated by the town board to be the coordinator, Dave McMorris. So, and we've, we've been looking at some of the programs that are already in, that have already been started in, in Unionvale and other ones that, that might be initiated, but we're hoping to work with Dave to make Unionvale a climate-smart community. What else? There's, there's a little bit of all concern at the CAC about how to, how to reach, you know, how to sort of get our programs out there and get people involved, and how to reach, reach the larger community, and how the CAC can maybe use social media a little bit more effectively to really get the word out. So we're working on that, and I guess there's, with some of this, we're going to maybe see if we can use the Unionville mailing list, but we'll deal with that on a project, project basis. So anyway, this is what we're moving ahead with. Happy to answer questions, and certainly any other initiatives that anyone here is interested in. I mean, we work at the pleasure of the town board, but any other conservation issues that town members are interested in, please let us know.
That's wonderful. We, the sub-full moon hike and the Food for Thought is going to be a great test for how many times we run it next year, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So we can get some adults down in the park. That's a big win.
Yeah, please, everyone come. What time should, what time?
I think it said 6:00 p.m. The only thing we need, we need Shady, I'll tell you later, we need Shady Knoll's, their, not their town seal, but their, their corporate logo, because she's got it, she's going to put it on the flyer.
Oh, okay.
And they have a neat logo.
They do have a nice, they have a very nice logo.
And then that can be emailed to you, and we can send it out the normal ways, and we can talk about that.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Okay.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our departmental reports, and I'd first like to call up Nina Bartholomew, who is covering events for us tonight, and come on up and join us, Nina. Thank you for being here. Nina is also the director of our after-school program, and our, thank goodness there's Timor. And you, if you could, your brochure's there, and if you could explain what you're talking about to the board so that they can hear, because they haven't had a presentation.
Oh, if you don't mind passing that out.
No.
Okay, so this Sunday, September 22nd, is our Oktoberfest that we have every year. I think, I'm just going to go ahead and read through. So it's from noon to 7:00 today. Last call will be at 6:30. It's a $5 admission, children under 5 are free, and newly this year, we're having credit cards accepted at multiple places all over the park. We are also raffling off a beautiful mountain bike for $20 each raffle ticket, and the winner will be chosen at 5:30. Souvenir Oktoberfest glasses will be for purchase for $10 each. We have a beautiful wine glass and a beer, yeah, a beer, a pint glass, that have the Oktoberfest global on them, and Unionville town, Town of Unionville on them as well. And with the first bill free, large inflatables and lawn games will be available for your family and bouncy houses and things like that. Another new thing we're doing this year is the NFL room, where the Jets and the Giants football game will be played on a big movie screen. We're also be selling pretzels, popcorn, and beer in that room as well. We're going to have local vendors, then the traditional German, German dancers. East Bischko Provisions Smokehouse will be there as well, providing food. Sweet Obsessions Bakery will also be there as one of our vendors. And also Milhouse, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Milhouse will be there.
And.
A lot of that German beer, the Duchess, the beverage companies.
Oh, Duchess, Duchess beer, yeah.
Duchess beer is true.
Yeah, do you remember the German beer names?
I believe there's.
Yeah, but it's been always the same every year, so I don't want to.
Hofbrau, I believe, Franz and Scott.
Yeah.
Good German names.
And we're going to have a band, too.
That's right, we'll have the band. I cannot recall the name of the band, though.
They're the same ones every year. I'll punch.
I'll punch. Oh, I'm so sorry. It is on.
They've been doing it for many years, so we've got a good following.
And the dancers. So it's going to be, I think this, the NFL room, it'll be interesting to see if people are loyal to the Jets and want to go in there at 1:00 and the Giants.
Yeah, all right.
Or if they're mad at both.
I hope that that room is busy. I, I think it will be, I think it'll be a great success.
Great, well, thank you so much. I know Jennifer Santucci, our event coordinator, had a conflict tonight. You're covering for her, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, very nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
And there's flyers there. Do you mind passing those out so people can have them?
I don't.
Extras, I think. Thank you, Nina. Okay, at this point, we also, we already talked about the Food for Thought, the Recreation and CAC Initiative. Now we have some old business. As far as old business, the first item is Homeland Towers LLC, the cell tower project in Timor Park, and what I can tell you is kind of a follow-up from what we had before. We are in litigation with the town of Beekman. They, they had initiated an Article 78 that we received. We are, our attorneys at Vanderwater and Vanderwater, Jim Nelson and his team, Jeff is also obviously at Vanderwater and Vanderwater, so they all work together, but they're responding to that, to Beekman's package, the inch-and-a-half-thick package we got, and I think that that's due on October 13th. And so Jim Nelson tells me that the judge will probably make a ruling at the end of October, or I think he'll get it at the end of October, and they'll take as long as they want.
Right, the, the end of October is the deadline for the final submission, right?
Yeah. So that'll be interesting to see what happens. But once the judge gets it at the end of October, then hopefully they'll respond pretty quickly. Now, we did, the next item of, and we'll keep everybody posted. I know I can't help but mention these things because it's so near and dear to my heart, but the lawyers did tell us it was going to be an $18,000 to $22,000 cost to the town of Unionvale to respond to Beekman's submission. And it's obviously something that we weren't expecting, and I just want to make sure people understand that, and we will keep you posted as what happens. But I also wanted to mention the Furnace Pond Dam. We got a new update from our, you know, we want to be responsible dam owners, and to highlight some people that may not have been keeping up with this, we did hire a new firm, Mylon and McBroom, to help us because nothing had progressed in years and years, and they have done all the research and finished a report. They finished it today and sent it to the DEC, which is great. The report was conducting an analysis to try to justify the lowering of the hazard class from a B to an A. And after they did all their work, that the town board has been discussing for several months, they formally are recommending to the DEC that the hazard class be reduced to an A, which would be awesome, that the DEC agreed with them. The next step after the DEC responds to them, and the reason that's important is if it's a lower hazard class, then our maintenance costs will be lower on an ongoing basis. If you're a lower hazard class, Aki, they can, you know, it could be 150% of what it would be if you're an A. So we want to be an A, and we're hoping the DEC agrees with them. Next up, the DEC responds, if we're, regardless of whether we're an A or a B, we have to come up with a maintenance plan. A maintenance plan for hazard class B is going to be much more expensive to us, a couple hundred thousand dollars, I'm just, I'm not sure. But the next thing that will happen is after we hear from the DEC, we will have to conduct a full engineering analysis to help give them the information they need to lead to the development of an ongoing maintenance plan. And then once we pay the initial cost of the ongoing maintenance plan, and whatever they tell us we have to do, and it's in good shape, then the annual fees are almost a minimus, so, for us. So we're, we're getting there. At least we're moving in the right direction, and it was, it was really great that they are going to request that they lower the hazard class for us, so we're excited about that. Old Business Stop Speeding Campaign, Councilor Welsh already covered that. So now for the board, I have, we have some items of new business, and if you would, you have in your packet a September 19th that says employee benefit payroll changes?
Uh huh.
Okay, these are for your consideration, we're going to talk about them next month. So quick review. We had a payroll audit for four years, finished from 2014 to 2017. The controllers, auditors brought it here, they reviewed it with me, and I responded to the audit, and that's passed now. But that prompted a few things that I remembered after meeting with them and after some of the things they brought up in the payroll audit, but we have already cleaned up, and you'll see that in the response. We've already taken care of all those issues because we hired a professional company, we're not doing it manually anymore and all that, but there are some loose ends that I wanted to mention. One is, we need to have in our employee handbook, something that makes this official, that their constables and highway department personnel are entitled to a minimum of two hours of paid time for each shift if a constable, and for emergency calls if in the highway department. We do it, it's never been formalized, it's never been approved by a town board vote, but it's just something that's always been done, and we've checked the minutes and we've checked the handbook, it's not there. So in the, and the reason I'm clarifying, Steve, because I see your face, the, what the handbook says is that any time an emergency personnel gets called out, any time somebody gets called out on an emergency, and it's really not our practice, our practice is highway and constables.
Just recall a vote that we had here in the past on that same issue.
Well, we looked in the minutes, we couldn't find anything.
There's nothing with the mention of constables.
Well, no, not constables, but it was highway department.
Highway.
Do you uncover the constables?
So the constables have to be confirmed, this, this point has to be confirmed, and then the clarification on the highway needs to be in the employee handbook. So this is tidying up stuff, but we just need to get it done. I'm going to recommend that from now on, we institute a three-month waiting period for full-time employees to get, to be offered benefits, and that's consistent with our three-month trial period for new employees, and mostly employees that come here are either on Cobra or have insurance through a spouse. But it is disadvantageous to us if somebody comes in, because we pay 100% of the deductible, if somebody comes in and works three months and wipes out a deductible and then leaves, it's probably not a great thing for the town, which it did happen actually once. So I think we should institute that three months, and we can talk about that next month. Compensatory time, I don't think that's a good idea for most people because it's, it can get out of hand really quickly, but in, in one area, we've kind of were practicing it on a very, very isolated basis. And then to make it official, it would, it would be specifically for non-exempt parks employees, which are a unique subset of employees because they have a potential to be paid for overtime, well, they're all, everybody's got potential for overtime. What I mean is, they have the potential to be paid overtime for snow, snow plowing, which only the highway does that, and also because they set up and break down for events like Community Day and Oktoberfest, so they're, they have, they definitely, if they've worked a 40-hour work week, that's longer than an eight-hour day. And in those instances, that particular crew of people would often be interested in taking some comp time instead.
Our park guys do snow plowing, too.
That's what I'm talking about.
You said it was only our highways.
No, this, this comp recommendation is for the park guys.
Yeah, I think it.
But you said only the highway guys do snow plowing.
No, read it, it says.
I know.
That's, yeah, me.
I'm saying what you said, not what's, what's written.
Okay, due to the, this is for parks employees because they get overtime.
I don't disagree with you. I see what you said was only the highway guys do snow plowing, but our park guys do snow plowing here.
In your comments.
And firehouses.
Right. You mean, you're talking about what I said earlier, before I was reading this? I don't know. Okay, whatever, let me read it again.
That wasn't what you were reading.
Pardon?
If it wasn't what you were reading, it's not what he was talking about.
Are you talking about earlier?
No, just, yeah. You got it.
Did I misspeak? I'm sorry. If I misspoke, I'm sorry. Let me make it clear.
The highway, that the park guys don't do snow plowing, they do.
Okay, let me, let me go over it again, so it's clear, I apologize. Non-exempt park employees are a unique subset of employees due to the potential to be paid overtime for, one, snow plowing, or, two, the setup and breakdown for events, such as Community Day and Oktoberfest. Comp time would be offered as an optional benefit under the department head's approval. So they couldn't just take it, they'd have to organize it and get approval from their, the caveats would be things such as, that it needs to be taken within two paid periods or during the slow season with their manager's approval. It won't be carried over into a new fiscal year, doesn't accrue unless there's an actual overtime, unless there's actual overtime for hours, meaning if you had a holiday that week or you were sick that week, you don't get comp time. It just has to be for 100% working. That's the suggestion, that's the idea. If I misspoke, I hope that's a little clearer. And number four, this is interesting. In our employee handbook, which is stapled here, on the first line, which, another one of those things that we have to clean up, per the employee handbook, health insurance coverage is for full-time, regular employees and full-time elected officials. Now, and here, it says all full-time, regular employees and all full-time elected officials of the town of Unionville, as defined by the town board of the town of Unionville, are entitled to health insurance coverage. We have never, we, we have to define what that is, and I noticed a lot of the town supervisors this week were sharing ideas, what's full-time to you, and it's typically, you know, a lot of towns, actually, it's typically the highway super, the town clerk, the town supervisor, and a lot of them said tax collector, which I thought was interesting, but then I realized a lot of them that were saying it, they, the tax collector is also their town clerk in some of the small towns.
Some places have a tax collector that works almost year-round, too.
Yes.
Some of them have a tax collector that does school.
Right.
So the way our handbook is written now, we are not following it, so what we have to do is decide what the definition of full-time elected is, and then we need to have a vote on that, and then it has to match what's in here right now. It's full-time elected, it's full-time employees, which is consistent, but we have to make it official.
Right.
You know, or have a discussion, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so that is the employee stuff, we can talk about it next month. If I screwed up anything else having to do with that, just call me and I'll straighten[1735.12] it out later. Okay?
So that'll be on the 17th.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, next up, under new business, we were talking about a boiler replacement in Town Hall, and Jake Gosnell, our park manager, is here. Come on up, Jake. I think there's some papers in your name on.
Sweetie.
Then when we last discussed this, we were going to review three quotes. That's the other piece we're not doing, yeah.
Got those.
Yeah. Want to just walk us through them, then?
Yeah. So we were talking last week about the ACs. This is the boiler aspect of that. We got three quotes as far, as far as taking the boiler, which was installed here in 95 and is aging and is not efficient, anything like that, and replacing it with a high-efficiency boiler, that will run off. The propane that is in the gigantic tank outside that we installed for the generator, so this is always part of the plan, and that would also do away with, while we were doing that, we would install a hot water heater, standalone hot water heater, in the same room. Because right now, the boiler that does our heat also does the hot water for the building, which, and this building doesn't get used all that often, you know.
Yeah, it's very wasteful. I know, in the summer, I run a boiler just for hot water.
Exactly. Yeah, it's, so it's, the boiler is running, like you said, all year long. It's not the greatest thing, and that would do away with that, which is way, way better. So we have three different bids here. We'll talk about the first two because this third one is way more for comparable things. But, so we have one from Crown and one from Coke. They're super, super comparable in price, and basically what it comes down to is the difference, two different units. One's a Beesman and one is a System 2000. They're both good units. I lean towards going, since they're so similarly priced, I lean towards going with Crown Energy because Crown Energy is our energy provider, and they're also our service provider right now. So they maintain everything that we have between the park, the two rental houses, the town hall, and the highway department. They maintain all of our heat, our AC, all of our units. So, to me, it kind of makes sense to go with the people who are already servicing the units. They've kind of bent over backwards for us in a lot of different aspects, and they've always come through and been a really, really good company for us, so that would be my thought.
That'd be your pick?
I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Well, they both got good remarks from the engineers. So it's kind of a matter of...
Yeah, plus the second one, they indicate they would only connect the gas line from the generator to the building, and Crown will connect it from the tank, which I think is a better way of doing it.
Yeah, absolutely. To me is a better option.
Yeah, much better.
Why does one want a 40-gallon hot water heater and one wants a 60-gallon? Or, like, is 40 all we need? Is 50 overkill?
I personally would think that 50 for this building is overkill because all anybody's using it for are washing their hands.
Yeah, there's a dishwasher, no real big demand for it.
Yeah, so.
Will they shower?
No, not at all.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Yep.
If we're converting to gas, why aren't we putting in a gas water heater? Or considering that?
It's, it's a definite consideration. The, the electric ones are a lot cheaper than they can be.
To purchase.
To purchase and install. And then we're also not venting them out the side of the building or out the roof of the building. That, you know, basically, it's ease of installation, which makes it cheaper, and the unit itself is less expensive. That was the only real difference.
Hopefully there'll be any discounted electric next year with ours.
That was the other thing, and it's a cleaner energy.
Yeah.
Doesn't get much cleaner than Coke.
Sun does.
Yeah.
Water, paper, and carbon dioxide.
So, our impetus here is to try to, is to get this done. They need a couple of days' notice, I think.
Yeah, Gary told me a week, week and a half, and he was, you know, just wanted to make sure that he could do it before it got cold, because there would probably be two days where we wouldn't have heat.
Now, I had a question at the last meeting on whether we were conforming to the procurement policy with this. I still have that question.
Yes, and I figured out why you and I both were having that, when we were chatting about that night. There's a formatting typo in that. And so basically, what you're required to do at this level, under $20,000, you have to get three quotes, or you can ask for a request for a proposal. The way that it was typed, Steve and I were looking at this, it said "or" over here, and then the formatting had the request for a proposal way over here. And so when you realize that nobody tabbed it over, the sentence reads, "Three quotes or request for proposal." And in this case, because of who we deal with, and the good service that Jake feels that Crown gives us, and I certainly love their billing compared to what we were dealing with last year. We had a lot to clean up with those various companies, and they're extremely responsive. And there's other companies that we deal with, we got the three quotes, and we felt, after we talked to our engineering firm, that we were on the right track. So we have the three quotes. We have winter approaching. We know we're at the life expectancy, the end of the life expectancy of a lot of equipment that we have, but this is to be the first one.
Yeah.
We're going to deal with the others later.
I think it's critical we move forward on this.
I did, folks hitting AC was here last week. And checked out the compressors and the condensers this week, and they're getting the quotes as well. So that is still moving along as well.
Yeah. We're just not quite there. We need one more, I think, and then, yeah, we can have that conversation. That's a bigger project. So does anybody have any questions about it? Any thoughts about hesitating or moving forward? What would you like to do?
I would like to make a motion that we accept the bid from Crown and move forward and have them install a new boiler and electric hot water heater ASAP.
I'll second it.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. We will contact the highway, Jake, and let them know that we're going to be ready to go on that.
Thanks for spearheading that, Jake.
Yeah, I'll let them know tomorrow.
Yeah, takes a while to get these done, so thank you very much. New business. Next item up, new initiative to grow certain crops, such as pumpkins, et cetera, on town owned land on Route 55 for use by events and summer camp directors.
Did you want me to come for this?
Yeah, just in case there's a question. I think, I think the impetus on this bill is to use some vacant land a little more wisely because we've been going out and spending money on lots, and we can't even find some of the products we need for the events that we use for decorations and stuff, so why not just grow our own? That was really what we talked about. I mean, did you get the corn stocks for Oktoberfest, by the way?
No, they'll be here tomorrow.
So they're coming? That's good. So next year, if we grew our own, although...
It would be very...
Pumpkins could be good. We used hundreds of pumpkins last year. So, I think Jessica said she bought 300 of them or something. And then they gave them away at the end of the, yeah.
Got 900.
300. Small, I mean, no, no, some of them are small.
Yeah.
They were different, right? But they were given away on the way out the door. People could take them. So, we have 1.39 acres. It's empty, it's not doing anything. We're going to not get in the way of the hot dog man, because that's very important property for him.
Yes.
And everybody needs to stop and get lunch, yeah. So, but back in the corner or something, we think, thought it'd be a smart way to use it, and we need to...
I have not actually gone up there and looked at any.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about whether that soil is suitable for growing anything. I know the history of the place.
But there's a lot of water back there, isn't there?
Water, it's all gravel. It was a gravel lake.
Oh, oh, above, I know there's water in the back.
Asphalt, concrete, and...
Oh, no.
Highway guys have the topsoil they could bring up there if we needed it.
That's right.
That's right.
And, you know, you make raised gardens.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, at least we're using it.
And there might even be some grants available for it.
Yeah.
All right, we'll be, anybody who talks about a grant has to write the grant. How's that?
I'll write it.
All right, you write it, get it for us.
Sounds good, Dave.
We'll be very happy.
I'll make a motion, Dave writes the grant.
If there's any mail.
We initiate the...
If there's any mail.
All right, you do the homework, you let us know if there's a grant. We'll help you write it, and we'll take it. All right, can I have a motion to try growing something on our 1.39 acres on Route 55?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Why don't we propose it at this point? Because we're not going to do a growing until next season. While we do a little bit of research on it.
Well, why don't we just propose that we start that process and then let it, let it take a life of its own? The parks guy, the summer camp kids might want to get involved, I mean, we don't know. So what's your motion again? Could you?
That we approve using that land for agricultural activities for the park staff.
And not be specific.
Right.
It's agricultural activities. That sounds good.
But not near the solar towns.
This is not part of the solar farm.
No, no, no.
This is the part of the land that we, we're going to be able to use for the solar farm because it's in a different...
No, and she said as long as they're not six feet. We have to grow pumpkins that are less than six feet, okay, I'll read it some.
Central corn.
Yeah, no corn, maybe short corn. All right, second?
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. I'm an aye also. We will use that 1.39 acres for some agricultural endeavor on behalf of the municipality. Thank you, Mr. Gosnell, for making that happen next year.
Yep.
Okay, next item up, updated financial processes for the tax collector and town clerk. This was as a result of a meeting with our liability insurance company. Interestingly enough, they said that, not here, but in New York State, cybersecurity and employee theft is just off the charts as far as claims. And so they wanted us to button up a couple of things, so we are adjusting our process just to make sure that we are totally above reproach. And those are in your packets. If you could take a look at those as we're testing them now, we can talk about them and finalize them when everybody's comfortable, okay?
Yeah.
Next item up, citizens preparedness training at Town Hall by the Dutchess County Department of Emergency Response. It came up during our community meeting when all the neighbors were in after, you know, for last Thursday, and some people were very interested in it. And so I've already gotten an email from Bill Beal in that department, who gave us three dates, October 8th or 9th, or the 22nd. So it's Tuesday the 8th, Wednesday the 9th, or Tuesday the 20th, 22nd, excuse me, I misspoke again, 22nd. And if we can narrow that down to one date and try to get our, put it out there, they'll come over. The residents would, it's from 7:00 to 8:30. It's free of charge, and everybody gets a preparedness backpack.
I went three years ago, it was very successful.
I, I thought that was good. So now, but there were, it was fewer than, the room wasn't full on that one, but it was a pretty good turnout, so we've got plenty of residents who might want to come. Maybe, you know, I think we've got room to grow on that, so having any room would make sense, especially since that group was very interesting. Does anybody have a choice as far as, you know, what the date it is, or, I'd like if some of the town board could be there, are there any of these dates where anybody can't come?
I would like to strike the Monday evening.
Oh, girl, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Tuesday.
Okay.
Well, if you heard it, I said it wrong. Don't worry. I apologize.
I think you just said October 20th, but they're hard to...
Okay.
No, you said it right.
So Tuesday, Wednesday, and Tuesday.
I'm good for all those, so whatever you say.
The only thing I would say is if you make it Tuesday the 22nd, it gives you more time to advertise it, but any night, I think it's good.
Okay, that's actually a very good idea. Tuesday the 22nd, why don't we go that route?
Yeah, that's true.
And we put on a town TV station and website and Facebook page.
This is not until October, though. We have, we've got some time. Okay, that's good. Hold the 22nd. We will get it out, get it everywhere, and try to get a full house. We'll have to have people RSVP though, I think, so they can bring the right number of packages.
Yeah.
Great, all right. I think the residents will like that. Okay, we'll get back to them right away. And then last, under new business, if I have it with me, I think I do. This is aggravating piece of new business for the town board. So I think New York State, in its inimitable wisdom, has decided that we can't just send our speed limit requests to them anymore like we've done. So now the New York State Department of Transportation, to review the speed limit requests that they're getting, they are requiring that the municipality must provide them with the necessary study data using standard NYSDOT methodology. So I guess basically, they're offloading that cost to us.
Yeah.
If we're going to request a reduction in speed, which we've done, and with all the problems and complaints we're having, we would probably, we could more than likely do it again, but New York State is saying that's fine, but you're going to have to pay for the study, and you have to follow their plan, and the amount and type of development along the roadway, various roadway features, the physical condition of the roadway, one or more speed limit studies, and a report and recommendation signed by a licensed professional engineer. So we'll have to pay the engineer, and we'll have to pay to have the traffic study done because New York is...
Cheap.
It's cheap not managing their money. I'm not sure what it is, but anyway, it does offload another cost onto the municipality when we're just trying to do the right things for our residents, but we still have to do the right things. It's just frustrating. I don't know what those traffic studies cost. I put in a call to find out. I don't know, Steve, you might know. Dave, did you, have you ever?
Not cheap, I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very expensive.
Yeah, so it's a shame, but I want you, everybody, to know that the letter just came from Commissioner Balkin, that he was just told. So, I'll have to keep that in mind as we're moving forward on some things. Now, we passed a one resolution that we had on the agenda tonight. I would ask now that we have a motion to approve all the transfer, now wait a minute, I want to, did you get your escrow reports?
Yes.
Okay, we have, I think I left mine in my office, but we have several that are closed. The ones that are closed that need a refund, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we pay the four that are closed, 1, 2, 3, 4 that are closed. We obviously have collected that escrow money from the consultants, I mean, from the applicants, and we'd like to now pay our consultants for the work on those.
Yes.
And there's four in total, they're in the report that I gave you, and the money's in the account. So I'd like to make a motion that we pay the closed accounts for the escrow money that we need to return to them. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We will pay those people early next week. Now we'd like a motion to pay all of our warrants. You've gotten the abstract, everybody's reviewed all the information that we send on email. Can I have a motion to approve and pay bills?
So.
All in favor of paying bills?
Aye.
All right, all in favor, we're paying the bills. Thank you very much. That motion carries. Now we're on public comments on town issues.
Sure, sign up.
Not for this, this is not a public hearing. Can you speak into the microphone though, so they can hear you on the radio? Thank you.
Should we hand you the mic?
No. I just have a rock and roll here. Ah, ew.
Tillman Shaughnessy Road, the new throwaway in Unionvale. Jesus, Tony. Okay, somebody came the other day, some big trucks came the other day and filled in depression's holes. It was very nice, I don't know who they were. And about the same time, a dam called me to ask if I had left those two garbage bags up near the And no, I did not, and they're still there, and I'm not going to come open, because I think there's dead bodies in there, so somebody better do it.
Well, the highway superintendent knows about them, and he is going to send somebody to pick them up.
I'm not holding my breath, but that's okay. Franz, when Aki walks the road, she picks up all these wonderful leavings, and my son picks them up, and I don't go out there anymore. I just, I scream at everybody, 25 miles an hour, and they don't listen. I want toll booths there while we still have all this traffic going through.
I'm working our scholarship fund, put up the toll booth.
Whatever, I, you know, I really don't care. It's a private road, just remember that. Oh, no, okay. All right, so much for the trash bags.
It's coming.
And filling the holes, all right, I said that. Is Cablevision still making quarterly payments to the town?
Yes.
Good. Who owns Cablevision now? Did we say something about this?
Altis.
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 Canadian company.
And when is, when is Channel 15 and Channel 22 going to get fixed?
I don't know, 15 has been out for a month.
Yeah. And we're going to fix it quickly.
They can't tell you, they're working on it, they said.
Okay.
Well, they got problems here. All right, I'm not done yet. I have three minutes, and I'm going to use all six of them. Nobody mentioned that that lady, in this meeting, that that lady donated money to rent the smaller house in the park to the Bockers. Do we know if they're going to be able to, or are they going to stay down there in the Ronald McDonald House for this whole western year?
I think Barry Barker will let me know when she's ready, but I think maybe when Will comes back from California, they need a home base. She knows it's there, it's, you know, it's potentially a home base for them, and she said she'd let us know ASAP. Right now she's afraid to leave.
Definitely. Now, somebody has addresses for the Westchester Hospital for these little jokey notes and so on for the family? You've got that? Can, is that going to be down here in the town hall or someplace, on the TV? Okay. I'll call DeMar, DeMar has that stuff.
Andrea will work with Corinne, she'll do it. Andrea will get it on TV.
Okay, good, good. Now, you said, Dave, that the fire company has been able to rescue stuff.
Yeah, been able to get, they were able to salvage some of it.
Some, what a horror, I just can't imagine. Where's the stuff being stored? Not, certainly not in the firehouse, it's crowded enough now.
No, I don't know.
Does anybody know?
I know Danny pulled some of the stuff out. I think they gave it to the family.
Will came by and got a bunch of stuff, too.
Okay, okay. That's going to be another expense if they have to have a storage unit. So maybe we can chip in for that, whatever. And the blood drive. Now, again, DeMar Osika talked about this sending card, she's friends of the Barker family. And then she went away for 10 days or 12 days. And she also mentioned this need for a replenishment blood drive. And I made a couple of calls, which were dead ends, but Mary Jane Begley grabbed a hold of Hudson Valley Blood Services and got this thing going for October 12th. Now, there are elderly's, not you, John, but me and other people 80 and above, who want to donate blood. They used to not take our blood because it was all wore out, but they will take it now. But we have to bring a note from our doctor saying we're in good health, and therefore we can then donate. I swear to God. So I do believe that Lisa Starzick is going to give us some more directives
Yeah, she did mention the
To make, to make
Website
Make it known, yeah, so people know. Because elderly can do stuff. We're crippled, but we can donate blood. Okay, I have more, but it's another
Next time.
Next one, thank you.
And Jane did not come tonight, Jane Geisler.
Oh, yeah.
Our senior wonderful, and she's definitely in favor of the solar project. She thinks it's area, so we'll follow her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, any other comments on agenda items? I'm sorry, we're on town issues. Oh, Betty.
Is this on agenda items or?
No, this is town issues.
This is just town issues.
Town issues. I just want to take a moment of your time to introduce myself or reintroduce myself. My name is Rebecca Smith Aldridge, I'm the executive director of the Mid-Hudson Library System. I just wanted to put a face to the name to make sure you know I'm here to answer any questions you may have as you think through the issue of library services for the town of Unionvale.
Thank you. Any other comments on town issues? Mrs. Albrecht, you might have something. You raised your hand, would you like to come?
Okay.
And introduce yourself?
It's on agenda items or town issues?
No, this is town issues. It's over.
We're going home after this.
All right, I just wanted to praise this town board on all the nice improvements they've done in the park. From the front of the building, the parking lot, everything is really improving, you know, under your term. Also like to comment on the Equestrian Center. It looks so beautiful. Wanted to report that Loretta Ryan is doing such a wonderful job. She's supervised all the improvements down there. She's gotten our membership up. I think we're, you know, almost $2,000 in membership fees alone. She goes out on all the shows that people rent the facility. And she, you know, inspires them to join the club. We have such a nice facility. So just wanted to let you know that she did a clinic for two days down there, and I think there was like 18 to 20 people who enjoyed what she did. So just wanted to thank you for keep improving the park.
Well, she's following your footsteps, Betty, thanks for all years of, your years of running the Equestrian
Well, occasionally the whole place needs improvement, so you can't do it all, I know.
All the time, but we're doing it.
You guys, you know, seem to be hitting the spots that really matter. Thank you.
And thank you for being the photographer there, because we get photos because you sent them to us.
Yes, I told him to. I don't get too many of the counseling down to the horse show.
But we help, hey, we help paint the fence. We did, we did some of that. Okay, thank you, Betty. Is, are there any other public comments on town issues?
Yes, one more. Jeff Stafford. Does the town board intend on renewing the contract with the library?
Definitely.
When?
Wait, wait a minute, this is time for you to comment, this is not a Q and A session, so if you've got something you'd like to say, we'd like to hear what you have to say, but this is not a discussion.
Well, the library system is a complete benefit to my family. My wife has vision impairment, she can't read. Well, the eBooks are tremendous value to us.
Good, good. Great, we appreciate your comment, and we appreciate your comment.
Well, I would appreciate you folks doing something about it.
You know, that contract's not up till December 31st, so we've got
That's right, around the corner.
Thank you for being here.
Sue Kelkriest, Darren Road. I'll add to what you've done at Timor Park, and I'll repeat that fixing the baby pool was a blessing to my family. It was wonderful, and I do feel that so many of the things that you've done reflect your desire to help the families. You're trying to bring more families in, and I love to hear it. You know, Timor's been, we've been here 32 years, it's been a big part of our family for a long time. But I am really concerned about the library, and you know that, I've written letters, I've talked to many of you about it. And I just, you know, I'm just going to read this because I don't want to, you know, forget something I have to say. The issue we really need to focus on with the library is the contract. There may be other issues that you're dealing with with the library, but right now it is the contract that is the main focus. And based on the Free Direct Access Plan, which is out there for anybody to read, it's really clear how this all works, and it makes so much sense to me. Our usage of our neighboring libraries has been deemed a hardship to some of them. Because of this, we need to pay a fee. The formula that they use, the metric, whatever you want to call it, could have caused us to pay an awful lot of money, and they never charged us that full amount. What they are charging us is absolutely fair. $75,000, a little bit more this year. All the residents, all the residents of Unionvale have access to quality libraries. Therefore, any figuring out of the fee has to be based on all the residents, cannot just be based on the subset of those residents who use the library. It's not that way throughout the Mid-Hudson Libraries System. Thank you for coming tonight, Rebecca. So right now we should be encouraging everybody, we should tell everybody what a great asset the libraries are. We should be finding ways to help everybody use the libraries, instead of saying, almost making us feel guilty because we are library users. Any discussions about the library should absolutely include representation from Mid-Hudson Library Service. They are the best ones prepared to deal with all of this, these issues. So I really, really hope that you explore this, that this gets settled soon. I think other people are in this room, other people are very concerned about this. We all want to be done with it. You have other things to focus on, we all have other things to focus on. So I really hope you can come to an agreement with the Mid-Hudson Libraries System, and that's fair and equitable to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any other comments?
Just one. Oh, I shouldn't say that. I just want to talk about the library system quick as well. We have a really good rec center here, we have a lot of other facilities for the public, citizens here. I think a library accessibility is really important to a town. I don't think it should be taken too lightly. I'm not saying you take it lightly, but I think if you think about the contract that's being offered and what the alternatives are price-wise, I think it's cost-effective. And when you compare what we're paying per capita here to the rest of the county, it's really not unreasonable. In fact, we're getting quite a bargain, I think. So I would encourage you to think about this contract and try to get it approved so we can make sure we can continue to have a library of services that we've been used to have. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else? So I will end on this note, and that is that I think one of the issues that we have is that of timing. I mean, our, we have been getting lots and lots of emails from Mid-Hudson Library System to engage in a conversation that certainly since we had that airplane tragedy, we haven't been interested in engaging in. And we've been extremely busy. To us, December 31st is December 31st, and we could have an hour conversation in October, you know, 31 days in October, there's lots of time in November. I feel that there has been some misinformation disseminated. This town board has said since day one, every single one of us is very pro library services. So that's not a question. It's never been a question. I do think this rush to force us into agreeing to some things that, actually, if any of you remember the Library Steering Committee, they had made some slightly different recommendations. With the Mid-Hudson Library System, we have said to them, we had some questions, we have some things we want to talk to people about. And this is not a discussion, we're not discussing this now, but we have requested that we have meetings. And Mid-Hudson Library System sends out emails, and they come to town board meetings, but they won't sit down and have substantive discussions with us. And some of our town residents that aren't here tonight have different viewpoints and have asked us to pose some questions. So it's our job to take care of all residents. We're going to do that job. We are completely supportive of library of services. I do believe we need to be very polite with each other, and you are certainly all polite, I'm not saying that you're not. But I want us to have a good conversation where we can throw out all the concerns of everybody's and let everybody be represented. And that has not been afforded us. So I would say one of the things we will have to do is have a sit-down conversation. It's not going to be people speaking at a board meeting. We've written letters, we've asked for a meeting, we want a meeting. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.